Okay. Uh, James Warner. I, James Warner, do hereby affirm. Do hereby affirm.
I am qualified to support and allegiance to.
I am qualified to support and allegiance to.
Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances of the village of Green Hills.
And the charter and ordinances of the village of Green Hills.
And I pledge to administer my duties faithfully.
I pledge to administer my duties faithfully.
And impartially.
Impartially.
As a council member.
As a council member.
The council of the village of Green Hills.
As a council of the village of Green Hills.
Of Hamilton County, Ohio.
So don't be that.
Of Hamilton County, Ohio.
So don't be that.
Congratulations.
If you do a seat here. Oops.
Yes.
There we turn.
Okay.
Sorry. Stay standing.
Your sign in and get back to me after the five.
No, they're back.
Okay. Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Hermes?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Hudson?
Here.
Ms. Walter?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Holter?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Okay, we have a prayer by Maria.
Lord, we ask you to send your spirit of servanthood upon all of us gathered here this evening to do your work for the benefit of all of our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who comes here to speak before council so they state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all and that everything that we do here tonight will move us to, we welcome, one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. Lord, teach us to be generous in listening so we may understand others' point of view. And we ask you this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the minutes of previous council meeting of January twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty, January twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. If there are no corrections, the minutes will stand as approved. Okay. We have a public presentation today from our librarian here in town, Jennifer Wyker.
Thanks for letting me come back again. We have some fun stuff coming up, as always, at the library, both across the entire system and at Green Hills. Any of you probably know that we'll be having an eclipse on April eighth, complete one, not too far distant, about ninety-nine percent in most of Hamilton County, but all of our forty-one locations will be having an eclipse party that day. Times may vary a little bit, so if you check out our website for that, and if you are interested in totality, our Harrison branch is in totality. That'll be about three-ten or so, so if anybody would like to take a field trip out there, there'll be a lot of different events. We've also got a lot of upcoming presentations from the Cincinnati Observatory, Dean Regus, other ones that will be talking about astronomy and mythology of the stars and just all kinds of fun things. We will have glasses, but only on the day of for use at the library. The libraries are not giving them away at this point. We're only going to have them at the locations for pickup. But there are a number of resources on our website of where you can get your own glasses and safe viewing practices for, of course, the eclipse. We also, Cincinnati Library received an incredibly generous donation from the Cincinnati Inquirer, and we are now the archive of their entire photo archive that they had. It runs from like, I don't know, forty-five to ninety-five, nineteen forty-five to nineteen ninety-five, twelve hundred bucks. And we will be digitizing those, but it takes a long time to digitize that much. However, if you are interested in something, we can prioritize what you all are interested in. There is a request form on our website, and you can ask for a certain number of them every four to six weeks or so. I think it's twenty. So if you are interested in finding some old photographs or interested in a particular event, you can submit those requests, and we'll digitize those. Once we've gotten them created, we will then add them to our digital library, which is available on our website, and that has anything from our lantern slide collection to everything about the branches to all kinds of stuff. So you can spend a little bit of time getting lost and having some fun in that one, too. Tax preparation assistance is still available at the North Central Library, among many others, but you do need to either call the main library or go online to submit to get an appointment for those. We are also going to have a lot of fun programs coming up. On Thursday, we are doing frog crafts for Leap Day, so if you'd like to make an origami frog or a little frog puppet, please come at four o'clock. We are also celebrating National Oreo Cookie Day on Wednesday, March sixth, at four-thirty with an Oreo catapult challenge. See if you can build a catapult that'll launch the cookie into the glass of milk. Those are for ages five and up. We are going to have seeds starting one oh one on Saturday, March ninth, at two P. M. So if you're just kind of curious about what it takes to get started on it using some of those L. E. D. lights or getting started on that, Amy Charlin will actually be leading that particular program. So if you're interested, registration is recommended, so go online, and we'll just be sure we have a spot for you. Slime for teens on Wednesday, March twentieth, at two P. M. We're going to have bas-, baseball, baseball bingo. I know it's also March Madness coming up, but we will be having baseball bingo on Thursday, March twenty-first, at two P. M. for kids. And then another one that might be of particular interest is researching the history of your house. Staff will come out from our local history and genealogy department from the main library and will be leading. If you have questions about the history of your house or another property, when was it built, who built it, what style is it, who lived there in the past, major events that may have occurred there, so there'll be all kinds of resources that will be available. So, yeah, there's all kinds, and I know this community loves their history with being the National Historic District and everything, so if you're at all interested, we will be having that lecture on Monday, March twenty-fifth, at six-thirty P. M. Thank you so much.
Could I ask a quick question?
Of course.
On the digit, when you digitize the images, are those public domain?
They are not.
Okay.
But there is, you, there is information on our website about who you can write to for approval for that, so that you can get the bits for it. But we do not own the copyrights for that. It's still.
It's good to know. Thank you.
Very much.
Thanks. Everybody go to the library. All right, we have no public hearings, reports of municipal officials. Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to welcome our new council member, and he has been, for those who don't know, on our Board of Zoning Appeals for years, which is not a very exciting position, because they only meet, what, like, once every two or three years, so I'm sure you'll find this one more exciting. But welcome. I also wanted to mention, it came up already, about the solar eclipse, and I know that Rachel probably mentioned something a little bit. We two are going to do something up at our park and ordering eyeglasses right now. It's one of the things we're working on, so that should be a lot of fun. We have our Winton Road, Andover Guard Rail. We thought it was going to be fixed last week. It is still not fixed, so hopefully they're going to get here quickly to get that fixed before the next accident. We're also at our work session in March, right? Yes, March. We'll be reviewing some options, additional options that we have there. ODOT's already been out to take a look at it. Our engineer has sent some officials out to take a look at it as well, so we'll see if we can do some more things.
I slipped another question in.
Yes.
It almost seems like it's happened more since we've had the guard rail put up. Is there any way to know if that's true or just?
That's true.
It is true.
That is true.
So isn't that, I mean, what do we do with that information? We're trying to protect people and help people, and then I don't know.
I, I don't know.
They, they look at it, look at the signs, and drive right to it then. They focus in on it.
The ODOT folks, though, I, I did learn that they look at a period of time for just the southbound, and there were twenty-two accidents over their time period, which I think was maybe a two-year period. So for what that's worth, there seems to, if not necessarily right there, that would be like from, probably from Cromwell all the way down to.
Yeah, Cromwell, probably to the border. Yeah. The corridor.
Yeah. Okay. I just, I, it just seemed like it was happening more often. I don't know if it was a perception thing.
It's because they're paying for it every.
That's it. People, people attracted to yellow signs.
Or now the cars aren't running off, because before.
Yeah, they're, yeah. It's just getting hit.
Got all. And then kept.
Well, and I, I did wonder if it actually happened multiple times, but not as severe, and then people just got back on the road or anything. But we don't, I know in some cases where they've tried different things out, for some quirky reason, it's caused more issues, and I just wanted to.
It seems like that.
Thank you. And over the years, studies have shown that if you have a tree on a curve, if it's two-hundred feet away from the curve, it'll be hit. Because if somebody runs off the road, they tend to focus on what they see, not open field, or run into the trees.
I just wonder if we have not had the electricity hit, electricity pole hit, like in the past. So we have not had periods of, the lack of electricity for twelve hours at a time, like some other times we did. I would like also to mention, is that also on the work session coming up, that we start at six?
Correct.
Okay. And third, I just wanted to say that through the snow that we had, the problems with the roads, the problems with everything, cutting off the limbs of trees, Mike has done a tremendous job, and whoever he has working with him has been absolutely tremendous what they have done. They were there. In fact, you, you could tell exactly what Green Hill started when you come to the road. And because the other, our community or the other jurisdiction had not cleaned, and when just hitting Green Hills, it was perfectly clean and sold it. So kudos for him. He did an excellent job.
All right. Moving on, Law Director Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one brief item. I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to introduce to council tonight and the audience. This is Kristin Wade. She's new associate in our office, and she's been helping me on a number of municipal projects and actually all the law directors in the office, so she's coming around to see how everybody operates. And this was probably her, her first swearing in that she got to see to fill a vacancy, so she came the right night. But that's a name that you may see on some other things, and because she'll be helping us out, so just wanted to get her out and introduce you.
Great. Thank you.
That's right. See how the sausage is made? Is that what we? No. All right. Other than that, though, I don't really have anything to report. There hasn't been any, there have been real no updates on the, like, adult-use cannabis statute that we've been watching to see if there are any changes, so nothing is, I don't think anything's really going that way, so at some point, council will want to make a decision on what, if anything, you want to do with respect to that. Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Clerk of Council Teresa Lawley.
Nothing, Mayor.
Chief of Police, acting, hand word.
Thank you, Mayor. During the month of January, the department made thirteen offense arrests, served seven warrants. Officers responded to one-hundred-and-seventy-four incidents, including twenty-one squad runs, five parking complaints, six trouble runs, five suspicious persons, ten domestic runs, which resulted in two arrests. Mutual aid was provided in twelve incidents and fifty-seven traffic citations, along with fifty-four traffic warnings. Department investigated nine auto accidents. Of the traffic citations, the highest speed that we gave was sixty-nine. Chief wanted me to remind you that we're having Coffee with the Cop, March sixteenth, in this room from ten to noon. We'll have donuts and coffee. We have the open house on May the fourth. May the fourth be with you. From ten A. M. to two, we'll have hot dogs and potato chips and drinks. And then Game Time and Touch the Truck will be June twenty-second. Cooking with the Cops on the sixth, and then Cookies with the Cops on December sixth. We also are looking to have information class for gun safety. Officer Young has said that he would do for the village, and then he also wants to do a, a few other things that we've got in the works.
Thank you. All right, now my report for the mayor's court, January thirty-first, standing bank balance is twenty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. Checks to be issued, state of Ohio, for eleven-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and eighty cents. Hamilton County, forty-two dollars. And to the village of Green Hills, five thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and forty cents. Also, I passed out to everyone the committee assignments that I've reorganized for this round of council. And community development, chair will be Jim Bonner, Connor. Rachel Hudson, vice chair. Finance, Jack Lee, chair. Maria Walther, vice chair. Government Affairs and Laws and Rules, Maria Walther, chair. Jack Lee, vice chair. Recreation, Cable TV, Rachel Hudson, chair. Jim Warner, vice chair. Services and Streets, Melanie Hermes, Hermes, chair. Jeff Holger, vice chair. And Safety, Jeff Holger, chair. Melanie Hermes, vice chair. And that's all I have. So I'm forgetting. Did you want to mention any of this?
I don't know.
You ready?
Rachel will take you.
Oh, okay. All right. All right, moving on, reports of committees, community development, and I guess we'll do the old community development. It's probably accurate, so the biggest step we'll be taking is I'll be passing the baton to Jim, and since I've done there a while, we'll probably make some time to get together, and hopefully it'll be seamless, all the things that we were involved with, or I was with Rachel. So we'll get together, set a meeting for that. Let me see what else. We haven't met since the last council meeting, so I don't have any additional things. We did give out the beautification awards a while back. We'll continue to, I presume, do that the next rain, the next, what is it, spring?
We were doing spring and fall.
Okay. Spring and fall. I think that's all I've got. I'm going to be changing committees, so we'll shift gears and move to the next. This old person will move to the next. All right. Okay, yeah. Safety. Melanie, if you want to.
I will be happy to pass it on to Jeff, and I will share it with him in our first meeting, since we'll, I'm still going to be in the committee, so.
Okay. Recreational Cable TV.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess I'll start with the annual events. I met with Yvonne, so thank you again for having me and my plus-one the other day to go over some things. So we did add April the eighth, the solar eclipse. Yvonne wanted to add that, and we talked about we might see if we can get some affordable glasses, maybe, but also it sounds like the library is going to be a great resource for that. Swimming pool, opening day is May twenty-fifth, so I do believe that the memberships are on sale right now, Yvonne? Memberships for the pool?
Mm-hmm.
Is there, is there going to be something mailed out this year?
Yeah, we'll mail it out March first.
Okay, so it'll get mailed out March first, so be on the lookout for that. And then a couple of new things that I want to point out are the spring community yard sale. We had a recommendation last year that maybe we have one on the green, so we are going to incorporate that, and we're going to have two and see how it goes. There probably is going to be a small fee, maybe five dollars. We'll have more information. We are going to try and get food trucks out there to make it fun, and everyone is still, everyone is still available to do their yard sales at their home, if they would prefer to do that. And we would like to try and coordinate and put some more information out later on for people that would like to have theirs at their house, to let us know, so that way we can have a map of who, what addresses have things to view and kind of shorten everybody's commute. And then another new one, which was a recommendation by, I believe, Jeff and then Yvonne, was having the Harvest Fest a little bit earlier and doing a kids and dogs costume contest, so we are excited about that, and we'll have more information. And Light up Green Hills, December sixth, and we're going to try and get some new stuff out there, so we'll see who we're able to get. And then with cable TV, just for Waycross, the registration is still open for the summer film workshop for teens, so you can go to www-waycross.tv and check that out, as well as the Green Hills programs, if you'd like to see anything there. And they do have the Talking with Green Hills. They're going to have another new guest soon, so you might want to go and check that out, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Several members of the community have asked me, since we don't have the Green Hills Journal, and usually was there to register for the pool, and it was kind of like an early bird kind of thing, what should they do?
Okay, first, we always do that, so we'll be doing it again this year.
But, but is it May? You said.
Yeah, you have through the weekend, Memorial Day weekend to.
To be an early bird on that.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and you know, people need to be sure they're, first, we'll put it on a sign at some point. We will, you know, our Facebook, our website, it's actually on the application. Yeah, once, once we put it out, they usually pick it up. So the Journal Online is another source, so we'll just.
Because they were looking around. Okay, they were looking, and they weren't sure what to do.
Yeah.
So may I say to them that it will be announced, and you always would have the opportunity to pay early fee, whatever, reduced fee.
Right.
For that particular date.
And again, if they pull the application or look at it on the website, it's, it's always on there.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I guess I should have said during Safety that the Green House Fire Department Annual Easter Ed Camp will be on Easter.
Thank you. I was like, ooh, maybe I should have said the one that's coming up at the end of March, so thank you.
I know we'll have another meeting before then, but just, it's usually, it's always on Easter. It always takes two minutes, so be on the lookout for the start time.
Okay. We have anything for Services and Streets? Who goes on that?
Just Jeff.
Oh, no. And Government Affairs, Laws and Rules.
The last time we met was with Safety, and we didn't have anything for Laws and Rules.
Finance and Auto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council at your place are, as, as promised at the last meeting, are the, the financial recaps of the general fund for both the months of December and January. You're welcome to peruse those at your, at your leisure, but we'll focus our attention on, on the January, where things, things are starting off well, as well as they did last year. And currently, the general fund balance as of the end of January was two million, three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and seventy-one cents. To date, there have been no transfers. We'll change that tonight through, through legislation. And expenses are minimal, really, at this, at this point, early in the year. Unless you have any questions, that's the end of my report. And thank you for Deb for finding, finding those recaps.
Okay. Moving on, we have opportunity for residents and non-residents to make comments solely regarding legislation that's on the current agenda. Non-residents must obtain prior permission. This, since no non-residents contacted me, this is the time for citizens to comment on legislation listed on the agenda for this session of council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet, verbally indicate if you, if you're a resident of Green Hills or a non-resident, then state your comments. Comments will be limited to four minutes. All right, new business. Resolution number twenty-two-four, R. O. one dash F. Resolution establishing new salaries for various village employees. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution twenty-two-four, R. O. one F. Resolution establishing new salaries for various village employees. Be it resolved by the council of the village of Green Hills, state of Ohio, that's section one. The following salary adjustments will, will be effective as of the first pay period in January twenty-two-four. Municipal manager, new salary of one-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, eleven dollars and eighty-six cents. The finance director, new total of eighty-eight thousand, seventy-four dollars and forty-eight cents. Clerk of council, twenty-one dollars an hour. Section two, that the following salary adjustment will be effective upon the completion of the police chief's successful introductory period on March first, two thousand twenty-four. Police chief, ninety thousand. Section three, that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. Mr. Mayor, I move for the acceptance of this resolution.
It's been moved and set, moved. Do we have a second on that? Should I do? I second it? All right. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments, questions? Clerk call the, call the roll.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Nay.
Resolution number twenty-two-four dash R. O. one dash F. Passes. Next resolution is number twenty-two-four dash R. O. two dash S. N. S. Resolution authorizing assessments of certain properties. Ms. Hermes?
Resolution number twenty-two-four, R. O. two dash S. N. S. Resolution authorizing assessments on certain properties in the village of Green Hills. Whereas, the village has given proper notice to the owners of certain real property in the village of Green Hills regarding the removal of vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris from the properties listed below. And whereas, the owners of said properties did not take action to remedy the violations, and therefore, the village of Green Hills contracted to remove vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris, and now seeks to collect said expenses by authorizing the placement of a lien upon the lands and collect it as other taxes. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the village of Green Hills, Ohio, section one, that the village council hereby certifies that the cost of such labor, together with the expenses relative thereto, be filed on the return in statement to the Hamilton County Commissioners as an assessment against the properties listed and placed as a lien against the properties by the auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio, as follows. Parcel number five-nine-seven-zero-zero-seven-zero.
Next resolution is number 2024-R02-SNS, resolution authorizing assessments of certain properties. Ms. Hermes?
Resolution number 2024-R02-SNS, resolution authorizing assessments on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills. Whereas, the village has given proper notice to the owners of certain real property in the Village of Green Hills regarding the removal of vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris from the properties listed below. And whereas, the owners of said properties did not take action to remedy the violations, and therefore, the Village of Green Hills contracted to remove vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris, and now seeks to collect said expenses by authorizing the placement of a lien upon the lands and collect it as other taxes. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that the village council hereby certifies that the cost of such labor, together with the expenses relative thereto, be filed on the return in statement to the Hamilton County Commissioners as an assessment against the properties listed and placed as a lien against the properties by the Auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio, as follows. Parcel number 597-0070-022800. Address, 15 Chalmers Court. Owner, S L T Properties LLC. Cost, $136.51, for a total of $136.51. Section 2, all amounts collected as a result of this resolution shall be placed into the General Fund of the Village of Green Hills. Section 3, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its passage. I so move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk of Public Counsel? Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Mr. Borner?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2024-R02-SNS passes. Next resolution, number 2024-R03-F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2024-R03-F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Whereas the 2021 annual appropria...
Whoops. I thought it was... Oh, there is a new one. There's a new one.
Grabbed the wrong sheet. Whereas the 2024 annual appropriations that were adopted on December 12th, 2023, are to be amended, and whereas the appropriations must not exceed total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code 5705.36A5, therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested from the County Budget Commission. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, since certain actions are needed in, in the monies appropriated so to permit the Village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year 2024, the following items of expenditures are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year 2024. Fund description. Okay, section 2. Section, that the following transfers of funds be made from previously appointed monies. From General Fund 1,000 to Police Account Number 2901, the amount $300,000. General Fund 1,000 to Swimming Pool, Account Number 2909, $140,000. From the General Fund 1,000, Banquet Hall, 29, Account Number 2910, the amount $40,000. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I've moved for the adoption of this resolution.
I second it. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments?
This is, the norm, normal for this time of year is that, that we, we move funds from the General Fund into these, these particular items. This pretty much, hopefully, carries those, those funds through, through the year. We may need to do other adjustments as, as we go along, but this is a standard procedure, so.
Clerk, Clerk of Public Counsel? Ms. Hudson?
Aye.
Ms. Walter?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Borner?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2024-R03-F passes. All right, the next item we have, any council members have any comments they want to make?
Nope. Other than welcome, Jim. Good addition, from what I hear, so I'm excited to work together. Yeah, that's it.
So Jim, how do you pronounce your name? Because everyone's pronounced it a little bit differently.
It's pronounced Borner.
Borner? Okay. I will mispronounce it a couple times, but...
He's silent. Just think of it as just the, oh, there you go.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we did go from Osmoglu to Borner.
I wasn't going to say it. Yeah. Always a word for the last name, so I was intimidated.
All right, municipal calendar.
No, I just wondered if Jim had anything to say, to give you an opportunity, since you're new.
Yeah, this is, I'm glad to be part of the council. I look forward to learning, and I've been a longtime resident for almost 27 years now, and I know my family loves the community, so we're excited to be here. And look forward to working with everybody.
We hope you accomplish a lot of things for us.
No pressure.
No pressure, no pressure. Okay, do we have anything on our calendar that we've mentioned?
Since, since the committees were just shuffled, I'm sure we all have to get together and talk about time to meet.
Does the, the Coffee with the Cops appear on the 16th?
Yeah, March 16th.
Yeah.
And the March work session will start at 6:00.
Oh, yeah. All right, this is an opportunity for residents, nonresidents, to appear before council. Nonresidents must obtain prior permission. Time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet, verbally indicate if you're a resident of Green Hills or a nonresident. Then state your comments. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for a response. This will allow time for thoughtful, for thorough, and thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to four minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all their time to other speakers.
I hope there's enough. I can add some. Okay. Sorry. Good evening. Monique Mason-Holter, Green Hills resident. First of all, I want to thank you for inviting Senator Blessing to last month's meeting to swear in our council members. This also gave me a chance to meet him in person. In November, another Green Hills resident and I had a conference call with him and his aide regarding some of our concerns. It reminded me that we had also requested he send a letter to the Federal Communications Commission regarding the court order on the outdated RF wireless radiation guidelines, and that we had not received a letter from him yet. I was able to ask him in person to write the letter, and his office sent it to me the same week. His is the fourth letter to the FCC by Ohio lawmakers. I provided you with copies of the other three letters, and read from them at, at least one of them at a council meeting last year. Tonight, I've provided you with a copy of Senator Blessing's letter, which I'm also going to read from right now. It was written to the FCC Secretary. Dear Secretary Dortich, I am writing you today to call attention to an alarming issue presented to me by one of my constituents located in the 8th Senate District of Ohio. The constituent has expressed concern that the FCC's agency rules and regulations for radio frequency emissions needs to be updated. According to the constituent, the FCC's human exposure limits for radio frequency has not been updated since 1996, and she is greatly concerned with the number of cell towers and levels of EMF exposure in Hamilton County, Ohio. I kindly request you consider my constituents' concerns and reevaluate the rules surrounding radiation. I thank you for your attention to this matter. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact my office. Sincerely, Louis W. Blessing III, State Senator, Ohio's 8th Senate District. As you know, at past council meetings, I have given you reports about widespread opposition to H R 3557, the American Broadband Deployment Act, and other federal bills that eliminate municipal control over cell tower and wireless deployment. I have asked you to contact our lawmakers about them. Opposition to H R 3557 includes the U.S. Conference of Mayors, National League of Cities, and National League of Counties. If these bills are passed, it could significantly affect the village's income, historical status, property values, safety and security. It is still unclear to me how many of you have contacted our lawmakers about these bills. I have contacted them, and I've had conference calls with staff at our federal lawmakers' offices as well. At past meetings, I've also read from numerous reports about these bills. Last month, I read excerpts from a report called Telecom Fires and Federal Wireless Bills. It's posted on the National Call for Safe Technology website. Fires are another reason our village would want to keep cell towers from being installed where there is no cell service gap. Again, I ask you to contact our lawmakers to express your concerns as these bills are still being considered. I'm also asking again that you strengthen the village's small cell wireless ordinance, so it's as protective as ordinances passed by other Ohio municipalities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. With that, we have an executive session we want to call.
I move to go into executive session to consider the disposition of real property.
Second.
All right. We're in executive session.